Is now, okay. I'd like to call to order the Chippewa Valley Schools Board of Education regular meeting of Monday, August 22nd. Please rise for the pledge. Oh, okay.
Let's introduce to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to excuse Mr. Bednar for this evening, and we think Jill is on her way, but we haven't heard from her, so I'm not going to excuse you at this time. The first, under additions and deletions, we do need to amend the agenda.
So moved by Mr. Pearl. Support.
Supported by, was that a minute, Mr. Sova? Just one second, please.
Yeah, that's Sova.
Yeah, I knew, I knew, but the brain cells went, okay. Okay, just a minute. So we have a motion to amend the agenda made by Mr. Pearl, supported by Mr. Sova.
Okay, roll call vote.
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay, Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Mr. Sova?
Yes.
Ms. Aquino?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mr. Voitovich?
Yes.
Eyes all. Motion carries.
Okay, we need to add an item under new business F5 for approval of a personnel transaction, hiring of a new administrator. Can I get that moved by Mr. Pearl? Anybody else?
Well, support.
Okay, so I have a motion to add F5 to our agenda to approve a personnel transaction. All those in favor, do you want a roll call vote again? No, I don't think we need it. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. Okay, next is presentations and recognitions, Mr. Roberts.
Sure, thank you, Ms. Aquino. We have this evening for presentations, we have representatives from the Chippewa Valley Coalition for Youth and Families, and I think tonight we're featuring a team council. So we have Dr. Charlene McGon here, and we also have Stephanie Lang, who's our assistant's coordinator, a student assistant's coordinator, and I think, is it going to, you're going to take over on this, Dr. McGon?
Yes, thank you.
So just before you start, I think everyone in this room, and maybe some of the members of the audience don't know, an important part of our district is our Coalition for Youth and Families. They do a lot of really important work for the families in our community and for our students in the school, and so we're going to showcase some of that tonight, and I'll turn it over to Dr. McGon.
Thank you. Good evening, and thanks so much for the opportunity to share some information about the Coalition. I think I haven't been here since pre-COVID, so lots has gone on, and I'd like to make you aware of it. This is our mission, and we focus very much on drug prevention, resiliency building, and suicide prevention. And this is how we're organized, and I'm going to go through this pretty quickly because I know that you have a lot to address on your agenda. This is how we're organized. We have different committees, we have different work groups, we are very connected with our students. We have two Coalition Team Councils, one at Dakota, one at Chippewa Valley, and we have some of our members here today to provide information about them. We're connected to our local churches through an email interface partnership. We have strong connections with community agencies, and I'm going to highlight a little bit about that. I'm going to start with one of the important reasons we do what we do, and that is it's compelling data that supports nationally, locally, on the state level, that students that use any substance with any regularity are not going to perform well in school. And this is recent 2022 data. We have been gathering data for close to 30 years, most recently in the last 15, 16 years via Mi-Fi, which is a state survey. And this really shows you that the students that report the use of alcohol, marijuana, and vaping, either vaping nicotine or marijuana, are far more likely to report D and F grades than they are to report A and B grades. So there's a strong connection between drug use and academic underperformance. There's also a very strong connection between alcohol and other drug use and mental health. It's a two-way street with children and adolescents, that is, those that have mental health issues are very likely to use, to self-medicate, and those that use substances are very prone to developing mental health issues, depression, anxiety, and there's a strong connection with suicide. These are a list of the things that we do, and one of the first things we do before we sit in our committees and our work groups, planning strategies and programs, as we have for many years, the Coalition is actually close to 30 years old now, is that we gather data, because we want to make sure everything we do is supported by data. And this is just a glimpse of our most frequent data, again, in terms of use. This is past 30-day use, so again, our students at the 7th, 9th, and 11th grade took this anonymous survey, computer-based, taken in school districts across the state. This is very similar to the results in other school districts, and some cases were lower in terms of use. And if you, these numbers show you the percentage of students that reported use within those past 30 days. This is much lower than pre-COVID. And the reason for the, and this, by the way, this is common in COVID drug data, nationally and state and local data, because of probably several reasons, but one of them is access, less access to alcohol and other drugs, and another is less socialization. So adolescents tend to use within the context of a social group. So this is much less, if you add 10 to 15% to any of this data, it would tell you where we were before the pandemic. Still high levels of use, but like other data during the pandemic, lower than it was before. The other thing we do also is to connect with community agencies to bring services into our school district. These are some of our community partners, and we partner with universities, we partner with law enforcement, we partner with community agencies, with hospitals. We have developed a variety of programs through these partnerships. We currently have about 28 community partners, and they help us in a variety of ways, including partnering to deliver programs, they participate in our committees. This is a program that we're happy to announce is returning. This is Smart News. This is the Drug Prevention Program at the 5th grade level that's been in the school district for, I think now, 24 years, was interrupted during the pandemic. This partners Clinton Township Police, Henry Ford Hospital, and CARE, a local substance abuse prevention agency, in the provision of nine sessions to our 5th graders in our Clinton Township schools. So we delivered a modified program. We find that 5th grade is an extremely important grade level before middle school to deliver drug prevention programming. And while we were on a limited basis during the pandemic, we heard from many parents and teachers asking when we were going to bring the program back in full capacity. Reminding that we also have, for many years, sponsored a community event called the Beware 5K. Stephanie Lang, who's here, is heavily involved in it. We partner with No Resolve, and this year, this brings our high school students together with community, and, let me see. Sarah, do you mind shifting? This is, I think this has run out of capacity change. This is our date for the fall, and we make this a community event to highlight student mental health issues, to educate parents on the issues, and to really focus with our students on suicide prevention. Sarah? We also conduct drug take-backs with Clinton Township Police and the Sheriff's Department. We've done this for many years, and we take back unused and expired prescription drugs to get them out of the house and away from youth. Sarah? We do an alcohol, this, by the way, is just some of what we do. I don't want to provide, you don't want to take your turn with a whole lot of information, but this, we visited tobacco retailers in McComb and Clinton Township with the Sheriff's Department and with Clinton Township PD, with our Coalition Team Council members, reminding them not to sell underage, either tobacco or alcohol. In addition, we involve heavily in the education regarding mental health issues, regarding drug prevention, suicide prevention, in terms of program, in terms of education appearance, students, community, and staff. We partner with our Pem program in the district to provide transition programming for students transitioning from the 8th grade to the 9th grade, and to the good news, we got a $50,000 grant one time that is allowing us to do a bit more education. This is a Prevention Network grant, federal funds that are channeled through the state. We also do Project Alert, which is a drug prevention program delivered at Algonquin Middle School, and involves our Coalition Team Council members from Chippewa. And we are revitalizing the Life of an Athlete program with some of our grant funds. This is a program that the Coalition brought to our athletic departments that provides drug prevention programming, as well as nutritional, information on nutrition, sleep, and training. And I met recently with our athletic departments, and we're moving forward to revitalize the webpages for Life of an Athlete. You may be interested in visiting the webpages that are connected with the district website. In addition, we create programs and materials. Mobilizing Michigan is on our website. This is a program that educates on the dangers of marijuana for youth. We get, it's being used nationally, actually. We get registrations from people across the country, across the state. It has a variety of information, and we partner with the McComb County Office of Substance Sarah? Ah, thank you. Online toolkit with a variety of materials. Thank you. These next three slides are slides that show you lessons that we have created for our health teachers. This is on vaping at the high school level. The next is, if you change it, is on marijuana for middle school students, and the next is marijuana for high school. These have been reviewed by the McComb and Elementary School District. They've been created in our committees in collaboration with content experts across a variety of involvement from different agencies, and they've been found to be compatible with the Michigan Health Model. So they are intended to be used in health classes, and they have been distributed across the state by McComb ISD. This is our website that houses a whole lot of information for parents, for students, and for school staff. Part of our grant funds are updating that. And then in addition, we provide broad-based educational programming via materials created. We are currently translating prevention materials into the three major languages in the school district, Arabic, Spanish, and Albanian. This is an Arabic translation, and we're working with our school district bilingual program. This translation was done by a translation expert at Access, which is an agency that supports the Arab community. These are informational pieces that were sent to parents, whose students were graduating this year, to tell them how to conduct safe parties. This piece was mailed in early March using grant funds to parents of students in grades 5 to 12. So we use a variety of means of social media, of mailings, of materials, and we work closely with community relations in the district. Diane sends out a variety of our materials to parents. We conduct the Red Ribbon Campaign for many years. This is a broad-based campaign across the grade levels that involves a drug prevention. And then we have a variety of social media campaigns that deal with parenting, that deal with drug prevention, and that deal with mental health. We've moved very strongly into the social media area. The, we conducted a 10-post vaping campaign. We conducted a campaign during COVID about the effects of drug use during COVID. And our Mobilizing Michigan social media campaign, 17 posts, were distributed across the state and sent to state legislators by a state advocacy group. We conducted a summer campaign that reminded parents to supervise and be vigilant in watching their children's activities. And in addition, we conduct workshops, and our Coalition meetings often have content experts. We brought Dr. Vron Vora in from Wayne State's Medical School to present on vaping, for instance. Every month, we usually update on Coalition activities and/or provide information on trends related to mental health or substances. We have a monthly newsletter that I, we send out to all staff, parents, and it's sent to the board. It's actually sent to key stakeholders in the county across a range of services, and it highlights updated research information and what the Coalition is doing. And we maintain the community resource list, which is on the district website, that allows parents to access up-to-date information. This was particularly important during the period of COVID, because we provided information on resources for food, for support for rent, and so forth. Finally, we do work on advocacy, trying to support and educate, really, on the idea, thank you, of to educate state legislators, local government, county government, on issues that relate to our students. And of course, those issues relate to all students, but in this case, we worked with Wayne State's Medical School, and their, the education on kratom, which is a substance that's been emerging, that's causing some degree of concern. We've been working all summer on a variety of things with the grant funds, and we're moving forward to create video pieces for our parents who speak different languages. We are going to be doing focus groups with middle school students, conducted by researchers at the University of Detroit Mercy, parent focus groups, and we are going to conduct a community, a parent-community survey, to try to get access to the perspectives of our parents and community on issues related to youth. And now we are going to turn, I'm going to step aside and turn this over to our three Coalition Team Council members that are here. We actually have 156 members between Dakota and Chippewa. We have the largest youth membership, we are told over and over again, of any Coalition probably in the state, but certainly in southeast Michigan. And our Coalition Team Councils work actively on their own activities, and they move forward the mission of the Coalition with our students. During introduction, I want to acknowledge our moderators for our Coalition Team Council at, across Dakota and Chippewa. They do an excellent job creating circumstances that move forward, resiliency building, leadership building activities, and educational activities with our youth members. I'm not going to read through all of this, but these, our youth are extremely important to us. We are novel in that we have more youth members than adult members. We have about 90 adult Coalition members, but we again have over 150 youth members. And our primary focus is supporting them, changing school climate, having, preparing them to be the messengers to their fellow students, that you can live life with a drug-free lifestyle. We use them as part of panels in a variety of ways, including cross-age programming at our middle and elementary schools. And I'm going to go past this next slide, because we're going to call them up, and we're going to have them just let you know what they've done last school year, much of which will be repeated next school year, and I want to introduce them to you. We have from the Chippewa Valley High School Coalition Team Council, Caitlin and Venesia, and we have from Dakota, Mackenzie. And by the way, you notice that they have roles. They function with executive councils, they learn how to conduct meetings, they're extremely well-organized. And with that, I'm going to call up Venesia and Caitlin.
All right, so the first thing I was going to talk about is our first event for our whole Coalition to participate in is Homecoming Parade and our showcase. So with Homecoming Parade, we can have an unlimited amount of people in our Coalition to participate, and for Chippewa, we have over 100 people within our club. So this is awesome, because it's an event that anyone can do, and there's no restrictions on it, and it's great, because as we walk through the Homecoming Parade, it shows great support for our club and what we represent. With that, we create the Homecoming Showcase, and it's so awesome that we get to do this, because when you walk right into our school, this showcase is very large, and it's the first thing that you see. We not only create this showcase for homecoming, but for many other events during our school year. Most recently, we put up a kindness showcase, so when the students first enter the school year this year, that is the first thing they will see welcoming them. In this picture next to it, you see our old E-board from last year. There was roughly a minimum of like 10 people on our E-board last year. This year, there's roughly 17 people on our executive board, and that's awesome, because we've expanded, and we've obviously had more people who are more interested and involved this year. We also, in addition to that, have added additional positions. Those positions being a 9th-grade liaison, a photojournalist, and a social activities planner. With this 9th-grade liaison position, we are hoping to bridge that gap between our main building and our 9th-grade center, because we've been hearing feedback from the students that that connection is a little lost having separate buildings, and we want to create that unity as much as possible. Moving on to the Beware Walk, you can go back, you're good. Moving on to the Beware Walk, just like Dr. McGon talked about, this is one of the events that both the schools do participate in. It's about youth suicide prevention. It's another event that we do that as many members can attend and get their events for. It's awesome, because in a normal year, we have people around the block cheering each other on who are participating in the 5K walk or run, and we also have students who will come early and do sidewalk chalk for people walking in, just to lift them up. And then this past year, we had little ribbons that you could put on a big poster in honor or memory of someone who is struggling with suicide or has gone through it. And then I, this year, also got to read a poem, and we partner with No Resolve for this event, which is a really awesome foundation that talks about youth prevention for suicide and mental health.
Project Alert, we team up with middle schools such as Wyandotte and Algonquin. We talk about the dangerous use of drugs and alcohol. Usually, our team members will go to the middle schools, and we'll do a scenario, and we'll do the scenario of what would happen if I invited you to a party that has drugs. We tell them how it's going to be like, what's going to happen, and how you could prevent yourself from getting yourself into that position where you feel lost. And then for student leadership activities, this year, we did have a banquet. We celebrated the accomplishments of educational and as well as leadership. CTC was there, and other many clubs of Chippewa Valley High School was there. And we also got to go on a leadership conference, and there was different places where we went around, and we actually had Ms. Michigan was there, and she provided us information of what to do at an interview, and we just learned a lot of excellent things that could help us leaders in the future. So along with everyday self-care, mental health awareness, we believe mental health awareness is very important. So in March, every week, we focused on a mental health subject, which was Week 1 Anxiety, Week 2 was Stress Management, Week 3 Depression, Week 4 Wellness, and Week 5 Student Safety Campaign. Each week, we did a showcase, and each week, we provided students with fidget toys, journals, something helpful that they could help themselves throughout the school year or any time with their mental health and taking care of it. And connecting with the district of 8th grade students, transitioning into high school can be really stressful for 8th graders or middle schoolers in general, because it's a bigger school, newer people. So we have students from CTC, and we do a panel. They ask us questions, and we answer those questions. Questions are, how is it like? What are the teachers like? How are the students? What do I do if I get peer pressured into drug use? We believe that we are the leaders for our middle school students, because we have the experience, and as positive people that we are for our district, we want to spread the awareness, and we want to guide them into the positive ways to go into high school as much as we can.
So another thing that Dr. McGon talked about is the Alcohol and Tobacco Retailer Project. This is another opportunity for people within our Coalition to go to the Clinton Township Police Department. We get to interact with people who are there and who protect our community, and then we actually get to go out in the cars and drive around with them. We go
We go to local retailers, and we, as students, get to walk in and talk to them about the dangers of selling to people who are underage, and what age they actually need to be to be able to buy these products, and the risk of buying these products. And it's a really awesome thing, because it's not the police walking in, though they're by our side to support us. It's us walking in and directly getting to talk to these people, and getting to spread awareness about the causes locally, which is really awesome. And anyone in our coalition can participate and sign up for it, and it's a really cool experience. The Kindness Rock Garden is another new thing that we started this year. We started at the end of our school year, and we continued it throughout summer. It's something that we worked on through our summer camp, which I will talk about next. But it's really cool, because we got local community donors to kind of donate to us, and give us these larger rocks, and even the smaller rocks. And then, we were able to open up two different clubs within our school to have them help us paint the rocks. This way, it was not only community, but school-wide involvement. And these are placed outside of the main building and outside of the ninth grade center. So it's something the students will see every morning, to bring them a little bit of positivity, and that it will just burst people's energy up, and just give them something to look forward to. Something bright in front of our school, and something that we were hoping everyone can participate in. So it was a really cool thing to be able to start at our school. Just something simple, but it can mean a lot to certain people. And then, the last thing I wanted to touch on is our summer camp. This was completely new this year. We've never done anything like this before, and we found it to be super successful. So as I said, we have over 100-plus members at Chippewa. We had pretty much half of our members at every single camp. We hosted three camps throughout the summer, and this was, again, completely new. We just, people who already signed up, we talked to them and said, hey, we're doing this. If you're free, come to the school. Three dates. We had one in June, one in July, and one in August. And so, at each one, we did something different throughout these camps. At our last one, we had MSU students come and present to us about vape usage. At our second camp, we were able to create large vape displays that we can hopefully take to the middle schools, to the elementary schools, to show them what is actually inside of a vape, and what you're putting in your body. Because once you realize what's really inside of that device, you won't want to touch it again. It was crazy looking at some of the materials that we were putting into this. We also had fun events, like an ice cream social, a water balloon fight. And it really just allowed our whole coalition, whoever could come, to bond with each other. And it was a really cool thing, especially for our new ninth graders, because then, going into the school year, they're now going to have some friends, whether those are upperclassmen, people in their grade, or both. And they also got to see newer members, older members. And it just really allowed us all to bond. And it was really awesome seeing the appearance that we had at these events, and how much people enjoyed them and learned from them to start off our school year. And with that, I'm going to welcome Mackenzie up to talk about some things that Dakota has done.
Thank you.
So like Caitlin said, my name is Mackenzie Kane. I am the co-president of the Coalition Team Council Chapter over Dakota High School. The first thing I wanted to talk about was Transition Night, which is something that we take very seriously over at Dakota. I feel like when students come into high school, they have a lot of really just like high expectations and stereotypes of what high school is supposed to be. High School Musical doesn't really help out with that that much. I'm just saying. But it's a great way for CTC students to, oh, sorry. It's a great way for CTC students to basically just share more like the reality of what high school is like, and answer a lot of questions that these upcoming freshmen have. Also on this slide, there is the Virtual Mental Health Summit, which I was able to present at with Ms. Lang. This was the Michigan Association of Secondary School Principals' Student Summit. Sorry, that's a long name. It's a long name. Anyways, but it was awesome. It just helps students to get an idea of how to start something like CTC in their own school, and how to help improve school climate. All right. And then, the picture down there is a picture of us from the Homecoming Parade. It's a great way for us just to highlight our club and what we're all about, and try to get new members. So, next slide, please. Alrighty, so Talk About It Tuesdays and Wellness Wednesdays are lunchtime educational events that are held monthly in each of the buildings. During these events, CTC students will pass out quizzes and information ranging on topics from mental health awareness, all the way up to marijuana usage amongst teens. Next year, we plan to work with the councils directly for issues that they see firsthand with the students that they talk to, which will help us target more issues that are more apparent in my school. Also on there is the Beware 5K. Just kind of reiterate what we said earlier, is make sure you mark your calendars for October 15th. It is a really awesome event. I've spoken at it the past couple of years, and it's a great way for the community to come together. All proceeds go to the Youth Suicide Prevention. And it's a great way to highlight teens and what we do outside of the traditional school setting. Excellent. Alrighty, so the Take Back the Tobacco Tree. We actually had three students trained for this, and they kind of helped piloted the rest of the group, and taught us a lot of important information. And we also hope to bring this to the middle schools sometime this year, just to kind of bring awareness to how addictive vaping and products like that can be. Also, Michigan State University, their Health Department came in and did an awesome presentation on vaping and marijuana usage. I actually got to sit through that presentation, and the information that they gave us is crazy. And it's very eye-opening to what is in these products, and what kids are actually ingesting into their bodies, which is crazy. The New Year Celebration with the Get to Know You Coho. This was really cool, because we had, everyone submit different like facts about themselves, and you got to guess, like, who's who. So that was also fun. And also, the Escape Room, Ms. Black created this, and it was awesome. She incorporated a bunch of different facts about mental health, and marijuana, and vaping facts, and it was a really fun way to learn all about that stuff. The Drug Take Back Ban, I think we already talked about too, but we just basically collected drugs and unused stuff like that at the sheriff's station. So that was also an awesome event that we had. Next slide, please. Alright, this was also super fun. So we actually got, I actually had the opportunity to attend the Student Leading Students Leadership Conference, which is overnight. And we actually got to go with some of the Chippewa Valley students, and we had a blast learning about different leadership skills, and building on top of stuff that we already knew. They had a ton of workshops that were really interesting and very interactive, so that was a blast. Love that. All right. The Alcohol Tobacco Retailer Project, we already talked about this before, just to reiterate, we had students go through different stores that sell those types of products, and just kind of bring awareness about, you know, people coming in with like fake IDs and stuff, and just being aware of who they're selling to. The Mental Health Month, so the Mental Health Fair was something that was very brand-new that we did this year, and it was a hit. I think we're all really proud of how that went. We partnered with the leadership class to bring this to life. And we basically had different organizations come in, and these places, I just want to read off how many that we had. We had CARE Southeastern Michigan, Hemingford Hospital, Livray Community Recovery Center, the Health Department at McComb, MISD, Homeless Student Project, Marines, Army, No Resolve, and a ton of other organizations. And the participation that we had with the students was crazy. We even had these little cards, that if you completed each station, you get a hole punch and a chance to win a gift card. So it kind of helps spark interest too, but it was just, it was awesome. And the final thing we did was End the Year of Ice Cream, because who wouldn't? So we had an ice cream social, just to kind of make plans for the next year, and set goals and stuff. Another thing about CTC too, is this group is awesome. Just between Dakota and Chipp, it's crazy. You make so many friends, you meet so many people, and it's awesome to make a difference in your school, and be able to connect with people who also have that passion you do. So that was our year in review. So, yeah.
Any questions that anyone has?
I don't have a question.
Go ahead.
No, I just wanted to say, first of all, Dr. McGon, you have amazingly led the coalition for many years, and I'm glad you're still here, along with Stephanie. And I would like to thank the students that came in this summer, and you were all excellent presenters. You did an excellent job. I mean, it's very impressive. So I'm glad to see that there's a great deal of student involvement, and that will help make a bigger impression on other students. So thank you all for being here and taking the time out of your, one of your last weeks of summer to join us. Oh, we're not supposed to talk about that. Okay. So anyway, thanks so much, and thanks for everything that you do, Charlene and Stephanie. Thanks.
I want to make a couple of comments. First, I think it's important to recognize that these were students that were speaking this evening. And their ability to articulate important ideas, their bravery to do what they do. And if you think about it, I did a little math while I was sitting here on my phone. About 12% of our high school students are in the Coalition Team Council, between our two high schools. It's 156 kids out of about 1,250 students that we have. Probably across our two high schools, that's probably the largest club we have. And when you think about the important work that they do, it's impressive. It's impressive that we have this many, so many students who are interested in serving others, and keeping others safe, and helping them. Because all kids learn this at different times in their life, is making safe, good decisions. And it's not anything that miraculously pops in their brain necessarily. Sometimes they need direct lessons. And think of the power of student to student. Think of the power of high school students to middle school students. Because sometimes, in life, things outside, there are, students are presented with images which may not be the image that is presented to them by students like this, who are real and in front of them. And I think important to note here is that these wonderful things that students do, these important things that students do, the opportunity that students are given to do these things would not be, would not be able, would not be, would not be able to do it without committed, caring adults. So I really want to thank Dr. McGon for her work on this, and also Stephanie Lang, our Students Assistance Coordinator at Dakota High School, who I believe at Dakota U lead the Coalition Team Councils. Is that correct? Am I that right? And I know you do a lot of work in this area. I'm just, I'm just so proud of what occurs in our school district related to this topic, because I think it really does make a difference, not only student to student, but what the coalition is able to provide to our families to help them. As adults, we lead very busy lives, and I think it's important that we look out for each other, and help each other, help our kids make good decisions. So I know all the materials that are sent out. I know the difference that the coalition makes to people who have been impacted by suicide in their lives. I go to the walk every year. Everyone should go to that walk, and just talk to the people that are there. They want to tell their story, that's why they're there. And just to have someone to listen to it, and someone to recognize the pain they've endured, it really makes a difference. And so, our kids just do wonderful work. And again, thank you to our adults. And I don't normally do this, but I always, when students come here, I always give out a Dairy Queen gift card. And our three students tonight, you have gone above and beyond. You qualify for two.
This is like Price is Right or something?
Yeah, this is so. Do any other board members want to say anything, or anything like that? We good? Mr. Pearl?
Yeah. I think everything you said is right on the, I've been to meetings with the coalition for 15 years, I think, or more. And the amount of, you know, of things they do is just, they just have a list of things there, but they do so much, and so, and everything is so important. I've attended some of the DEA Drug Back, Drug Take Back Days at the police station, and people bring in medicine that they've got stored. Thank God they're bringing it in, and there's a place to take it, because they don't want family members or other people to get hold of that medicine that's been stored in their medicine canvas for years. So there's a lot, there's so many good programs they do. So thank you to the team councils, and I know they step up and do this, and very important. And Dr. McGon, thank you for everything you do, and your staff. It's just terrific. And sometimes, you, you know, they do bring in a lot of speakers. You've been there, Sir Albert, a lot of time, listening to their speakers, and they're very informative. With the help of the coalition, the schools, the churches, and a lot of people, we were able to stop our community, at least in Clinton Township, from opening up marijuana facilities, selling marijuana. So, I mean, that was a big thing. There was a gigantic effort, and they were faced with a campaign that went to the voters, and they won the campaign. And a lot of people put up a lot of money to fight us, and the coalition really helped stop that. And they thought it was important, and we thought it was important, to stop that and not have it in the community. So, thank you.
Good. Let's hear it for Coalition Team Council. And then, we'd like to do a photo app, so we'd have our students and adults that are here with the coalition come up, please.
Of course.
So we'll have you three get a little closer here. Two, right there?
I know. So everybody, like, make sure you can see me, and you can see all of you.
I just, I need to recognize Lori Black. So Lori, right there, she's the Ninth Grade Center Student Citizens Coordinator, and we need just a special round of applause for Lori. Her own. Thank you for what you do.
Okay, moving on to the D1, the General Consent Agenda. Can I have a motion for that, please?
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Pearl, supported by Ms. Pyton. Does any, do any members have any items that they want removed for discussion or questions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do you have a, do you have a retirement this evening that is in attendance? So if you would like to come to the front, come forward. How can these people be retiring? Come on.
Jeanne, you can go right over here.
Oh, my gosh.
And, okay.
Yeah, really.
Whereas Janine Morikone has served the Chippewa Valley School District faithfully and diligently for a period of 25 years as a teacher. Whereas Janine Morikone, through her leadership, has had a positive impact on the staff, students, and the community. Whereas Janine Morikone, a conscientious, loyal, hard-working employee, has elected to retire. And whereas Janine Morikone will be missed by all her school colleagues. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Chippewa Valley School District, not only on their behalf, but also that of the Superintendent of Schools and the Administration, extend their thanks and appreciation for a job well done, as well as best wishes for the future. Be it further resolved that this resolution, having been adopted by the Board of Education of the Chippewa Valley School District on the 22nd day of August 2022, be made a permanent part of the records of the school district, and a copy sent to Janine Morikone as an expression of our appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you to the board. Thank you very much. Thank you to my coworkers for being here today. It was such a privilege to work for Chippewa Valley Schools. It's very bittersweet and very emotional. So Chippewa Valley will always be my So Chippewa Valley will always be my home.
Well, good, because we need good substitutes. Glad to hear that. First, Janine, why don't you tell your career, where you started and what you taught, buildings you were in?
I actually started with my student teaching placement long time ago, back in, I think it was 1990, at Wyandotte Middle School. It took eight years after student teaching to be hired in Chippewa Valley, and I did not give up. So I taught in the parochial school system, was a substitute teacher here in the district long terms, coaching, science, Olympiad. Then I was hired at Ottawa as the science specialist, back in the day when the special was brand new. So that was quite a privilege, honor. I had Mr. Soba's kids, Mr. Pearl's kids in my class then. After Ottawa, I then transferred to Cheyenne, brand new building, working under Mr. Roberts. So that was a great experience. After that, I took a job in counseling. I wanted to make use of my master's in counseling, so I went to Algonquin for a time. And from Algonquin to Ochibwa, and I may have missed some schools along the way, but it's been a long journey and a wonderful journey.
So eight years in Catholic schools and subbing, or was just another eight years subbing, right?
Combined.
Combined, right. So I look at that as eight years of loss to our students in Chippewa Valley, and eight years of gain to students somewhere else. I had the privilege of working with Janine at Cheyenne Elementary as the principal of that school, and Janine is one of the teachers. And I can tell you, she's a consummate professional. You never, ever had to be concerned about what was going on in Janine's classroom. Never. A minute, a second, was never wasted when she taught. She knew exactly what her kids knew and what her kids needed to know, and she knew how to get them there. She had wonderful relationships with her kids. And I can honestly say, I do not think I ever received one phone call from a parent who was confused about what happened in Janine's classroom. Number one, what went on was excellent. And number two, Janine communicated wonderfully well with parents. So you will certainly be missed. I know from the minute I knew you, way back then, to when you finished your teaching career in June, you never stopped working hard. And you've been a true asset to Chippewa Valley and to our students. So with that, I have for you the resolution, a framed resolution, the resolution that was read by Ms. Pyden, and a retirement bell. A bell! So congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you have anything you'd like to say? Parting words?
Parting words.
Just thank you very much. I appreciate Mr. Roberts' words and for my friends in supporting me through this journey and being here today. So thank you to everyone.
Well, we wish you a long, healthy retirement.
I know we hated to see you leave when you left Ottawa way back.
Thank you.
Yeah, because George had a lot of kids.
And they were all perfect, I'm sure, Rachel.
I got one too, but.
Okay, next, well, why don't we take just a quick break, so whoever wants to leave can just leave quickly, and we can carry on. I guess they don't want to. Okay. First item is F1, approved change order summary. Oh, there's nothing under old business E. Next is F1, approved change order summary. Mr. Sederlin, it's going to be read by Mr. Roberts this evening.
Okay, recommended motion that Chippewa Valley Schools Board of Education approve the 2018 bond issue change order summary report for the month of July 2022.
So moved, oh, excuse me, moved by me.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Pearl, rationale, please.
This work consists of changes to existing contracts for the purpose of owner requested work, DDOCs, code compliance, or hidden conditions on the construction and equipment projects. All amounts are within the contingency budget allocation. This report was reviewed with the Building and Site Subcommittee on Monday, August 8, 2022, and funding will come from the 2018 Building and Site Fund.
Any questions or comments?
Is this the change order that includes the Ottawa Electrical?
No. I don't think so. It's not listed there, so.
I didn't think so, okay.
Okay, is that it? Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item F2, Mr. Roberts.
Recommended motion that the Chippewa Valley Schools Board of Education approve the following community support groups for the 2022-2023 school year. Algonquin Middle School PTO renewal, Cherokee Elementary School PTO renewal, Cheyenne Elementary School PTO renewal, Clinton Valley Elementary School PTO renewal, Erie Elementary School PTO renewal, Fox Elementary School PTO renewal, Huron Elementary School PTO renewal, International Academy of Macomb PCC renewal, Miami Elementary School PTO, Mohawk Elementary School PTO, Ochibwa Elementary School PTO, Ottawa Elementary School PTO, Secory Elementary School PTO, Shawnee Elementary School PTO, Chippewa Valley High School Athletic Boosters renewal, Chippewa Valley High School Band Boosters renewal, Chippewa Valley High School Choir Boosters renewal, Dakota High School Boosters renewal, and the Dakota Wrestling Club renewal.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Pearl, supported by Mr. Soba. Any rationale, please?
Board Policy 9211 adopted September 8, 2003 states, "Any community members desiring to establish a non-student school organization known as a school community support group or an independent organization known as an independent community support group for the purpose of supporting school operations and program improvement shall submit an application to the Office of the Superintendent by June 14th. Existing community support groups will be required to submit a renewal application each year."
Okay, questions or comments from anyone?
I have one. Are there any outstanding applications for any of our community support groups? Like, anyone that didn't ask for a renewal this year?
I think Mr. Sederlin is on, if he could answer the question, if there are any outstanding groups for, to be support groups. There are no outstanding support groups. All are in files.
Great. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Not really a question, but I have a comment. I guess, I know a couple of these were in question, if they were going to be able to keep in existence, and I'm just really happy to hear that they are.
Well, I was leafing through this, and everyone has a, looks like they have officers filling out positions. That's very exciting. And I'm happy to see that also, because I know sometimes it is a struggle.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. May, I mean, all those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Next item on the agenda is, hold on a minute, F3, approved purchase of telecommunications services. Mr. Roberts?
Recommended motion that the Chippewa Valley Schools Board of Education approve the following contracts for communication services at an estimated annual cost of, the vendor Granic Epic, category POTS lines, with an annual cost of $25,887.60, and interstate security, category of alarm lines, with an annual cost of $17,196.12.
I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Pearl, supported by Mr. Boitovich. Rationale, please?
Aggressive pricing was obtained through the E-rate public bidding process. The POTS, or POTS line, contract is for three years. The proposals were reviewed and approved by the Purchasing and Technology Department's funding will come from the general fund for these services.
Questions or comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F4, adopt revised Board Policy 2114, Mr., Dr. Broski.
Thank you. Recommended motion that the Chippewa Valley Schools Board of Education adopt revised Board Policy Number 2412, homebound instruction program, and the reading of the policy be waived.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Aquino, supported by Ms. Pyden. Rationale, please?
Policy Number 2412 is meant to align our policies with changes and requirements of the Pupil Accounting Manual, Section 5D, homebound and hospitalized pupils, citing requirements for counting in membership 6A. This is necessary to ensure funding from the State of Michigan Foundation allowance.
Okay, any questions or comments? All these, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item F5, Mr. Roberts, hearing of an administrator.
Recommended motion that the Chippewa Valley Schools Board of Education approve the appointment of Ms. Kristen Doyle to the position of principal for Clinton Valley Elementary. Ms. Doyle's effective start date will be August 23, 2022.
Moved by Mr. Soba, supported by Ms. Pyden. Rationale?
Ms. Doyle is being appointed to fill a vacancy created by a promotion, and she meets all the qualifications of the posting.
Okay, um, okay, we have a motion already? So I did the, was it you? Yeah, questions and comments, thank you. Anybody? Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
So I want to start by saying thank you to the Board of Education, Mr. Ron Roberts, and everybody back there that was a part of my journey to get to where I am right now. I, you know, interviewing is definitely not a comfortable thing to do, but the people here in this building had, have made it so, had made me feel so welcome just from the very start. So I wanted to make sure that I thanked you for that specifically, and it does feel really, really good to be back home. And I say that because Chippewa Valley is my home. I was a student at Mohawk Elementary, Iroquois Middle School, and a graduate from Dakota High School. So I am part of this community. My heart is with this community. She's a parent of a Chippewa Valley student, and so I'm just really excited to come back. A little bit about my history professionally. I have been now in education now for 12 years. I was a teacher on the front lines, as a fourth grade teacher for a while, a sixth grade teacher, and a middle school teacher for quite some time. I'm very, very passionate about education, literacy specifically, and just kids. And so I worked in Detroit, at Detroit Merit Charter Academy for those 12 years, most of which as a teacher, and the last few years as an administrator there. So I'm looking very much forward to combining my knowledge of this community by being a part of it, and my experiences in the community of Detroit, and just bringing that together to serve the community that already has served me so well and got me to the position that I'm in today. So I look forward to this, and I thank you again so much, and I'm really, really excited and hopeful that this is going to be an amazing experience for the families, the students, myself, and the teachers. And so lastly, I'd like to thank my mom, my dad, and my family. Spent a crazy journey this summer interviewing the ups and downs, the highs and lows, and they're a huge support system, and so I'm very blessed to have that as well. So, thank you.
Welcome home, Kristen.
Thank you.
I know too that Kristen's husband was a Chippewa Valley student, because he attended Huron when I was there as a teacher. And so Kristen, it's just a good thing I liked him. I think he at least had good taste there. I do want to, I want to recognize here, again, I do this usually, I try to do this, and I want to recognize HR and the interview teams, because they play such an important role to allow candidates who, who maybe would not be noticed. And I say that because when someone comes from the outside, it's a little bit more, it's a bigger hill to climb. And, but I appreciate the open mind of our HR administrators, Adam, and our educational services team, and all the building administrators who participate in the interview process, because they are very open-minded in allowing these candidates to rise and to be noticed. And that's really important, because there's so much strength within of our school district already, but I do think we need to balance that and bring in people who have had different experiences and have some different ideas.
Kristen?
Kristen talked about her experience outside in a charter school. She talked in the interview about her commitment to those kids. You learn through the interview process of her dedication to education, her willingness to do almost anything to help kids succeed, her knowledge base of things that we need in our schools. And I'm sure she'll be wonderful at Clinton Valley. I think that the community will be extremely happy, as will the, our teaching staff, the entire staff at Clinton Valley Elementary School, to have such a passionate individual who will lead in such a collaborative way and really make a difference at Clinton Valley. So welcome to Chippewa Valley Schools, Kristen, and we look forward to, I think tomorrow, I think they're required to be there at 6:30.
Did you tell them?
6:30 a.m. is when they start, and then you work till 8:30 at night. So, Daven and the kids, you'll see her sometime in September, maybe over Labor Day weekend. But you'll love it here. They can come visit you while you work. So just congratulations and welcome to Chippewa Valley.
So happy to be back.
And we do need to do a picture.
Yep.
So.
Come on.
You're gonna be shy, Georgia? It's okay. It used to be just. Yeah, that's how it should be.
Oh, there he is.
Okay. If they want to go, yeah, if they want to go, I'm going to take a one-minute break here. I need to, I need to go.
Kristen, Kristen. Okay, you want to take a five-minute break?
I'm gonna take, we're gonna take a five-minute break, okay?
I'm gonna give one to your brother. Oh, no, he's coming. She wants to do it.
So cute.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, don't eat that. That's gonna get you what you want to eat.
Bye-bye.
How much does it cost to go to a little dairy?
Switch?
Awesome.
Yeah, you're gonna work for a PI. So if you need a. Yeah, we probably do.
Exactly. Always.
I've been retired two days. I gotta get a job. Oh, she can just wave.
Okay, next item on the agenda is from the community, and my first flip is Mr. Terry Prince. Would you like to come to the microphone?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Last time I was here, I spoke about the lack of transparency this board displayed in passing a new policy regarding community comment. This decidedly adversarial move against the very community you are elected to represent shows how you feel toward those of us who elect you. So it shouldn't really come as a no surprise, even though I'm sure you paid a lawyer to review this new policy, and you have a lawyer currently serving on the board, that the rules you approved are still unconstitutional. I have here a copy of the ruling from the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals, U.S. Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals, from over a year ago, which is binding in the state of Michigan. It states categorically that the rules that you have for community comment are unconstitutional. Yet, given the opportunity to correct that, you didn't. You still opted to keep rules, in fact, make them more adversarial against the community that you claim to represent. I'll read some of the excerpts from the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals that I mentioned, as I mentioned, is binding in Michigan.
Mr. Prince, could you give us a citation, please?
Sure. This is Billy Eisen, Sandra Eisen, Abby Eisen, and Carolyn Del Patrick versus Madison Local School District Board of Education. It's out of Ohio. It was argued on June 9th, 2021, and filed on July 7th of 2021.
Thank you.
In the, that particular school board rules state, "The policy authorizes the presiding officer to prohibit public comments that are frivolous, repetitive, and/or harassing, interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when the statement is too lengthy, personally directive, abusive, off-topic, antagonistic, obscene, or irrelevant, request any individual to leave the meeting when that person does not observe reasonable decorum, and request the assistance of law enforcement officers in the removal of a disorderly person when that person's conduct interferes with the orderly progress of the meeting." Those words are nearly word-for-word the same as Chippewa Valley Schools Board of Education Policy 0167.3. In its opinion, the court states, "The antagonistic restriction by definition prohibits speech opposing the board. An abusive prohibits insulting language with personally-directed, meaning simply abusive speech directed at one person, per the board's interpretation. These terms plainly fit in the broad scope of impermissible viewpoint discrimination because they prohibit speech purely because it disparages or offends." "The restriction on antagonistic, abusive, and personally-directed speech prohibits speech because it offends or offends the board or members of the board in violation of the First Amendment." Accordingly, the policy's restrictions on abusive, personally-directed, and antagonistic speech, facially and as applied, violate the First Amendment. I would certainly recommend that this board look into making those policies, our policies, more constitutional. It should be noted that this case was recently settled in 2022, and the district paid the plaintiffs $107,500 to settle that case. I'm a layperson. I'm an accountant. I'm not a lawyer. I found this online with a simple Google search. There's other cases. There's another case in the circuit that covers Pennsylvania, which I know does not, is not binding in Michigan. I think that's the Fifth Circuit, but I could be wrong. It's had the same finding, that those terms are unconstitutional. They violate the First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution. So I would implore this board, if they're going to make changes to policies, at least make the changes. At the same time, make sure that the changes you make are legal. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is, let's see here, Mr. Miles is next.
Good evening, board members. I just wanted to address the board very quickly before the school year starts, just to make sure that you are diligent in reminding all of your teachers and staff that there is a federal regulation preventing schools from asking students anything regarding sexual orientation, which includes pronouns, personal or family religious affiliation, personal or family political affiliation. Pursuant to the Protection of Pupil Rights Amendment, I, along with most parents, would like to be assured before the school year begins that all Chippewa Valley School District staff is aware of what is appropriate and what isn't to ask their students as they get to know them. Examples of inappropriate and invasive pursuant to the P-P-R-A that require parental opt-in, including but not necessarily limited to, what is your preferred pronoun? What is your gender identity? What are your sexual orientations? What are your sexual preferences? What are your political views? What medicines are in your home's medicine cabinet? What are your parents' political views? Which news do your parents watch? A few examples of appropriate and non-invasive per the P-P-R-A that do not require parental opt-in. Do you have a nickname you would like me to use? Do you have pets? Do you have siblings? What is your favorite color? What are your hobbies? If you're not familiar with the Protection of Pupils Rights Amendment, feel free to look it up yourself at studentprivacy.ed.gov/content/pprA. Again, that's studentprivacy.ed.gov/content/pprA. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker is Michelle Bocano. If she'd like to come to the podium. Is she not here? Michelle?
She had to leave.
Oh, she had to leave. I'm so sorry to hear that. Okay. So Michelle asked leave. Hopefully she can come back, or if she wants to call someone and let us know what her comment was, we would be welcome. We would be happy to hear it. Okay, under A, Union Communication, there's no one here from that group. A is Administrative Reports. Mr. Roberts?
All right, I just want to recognize a new hire here. We have Autumn Jarrett, who's going to be a music teacher at Clinton Valley, right, Clinton Valley? So you're, you just met your new principal, too? That's nice.
That's nice.
And during the interview, I asked her if she could sing, and she said not a lick, so there's a project for you over the next year. So, good luck with that. Welcome to Chippewa Valley Schools. And did you teach elsewhere before being hired here?
I did. Do you want me to call up? I'm sorry.
Yeah, of course. Come on up.
I feel weird talking to you all the way down the back, looking at the two people's heads. Hi, yeah, I taught five years at Prevail Academy, which is in Mount Clemens. So like, same city, same student body, well, not student body, but same kind of, same area as Clinton Valley. So I was there for five years, and then I taught privately for like, guitar, piano, voice, stuff like that, private lessons for, I want to say, six or seven years. And then I went to Chippewa Valley High School, wind-up middle school, and here on elementary. So, I'm back.
Very good.
Yeah.
Hopefully you're excited to be back, right?
I am. It feels like home, like, just kind of like she said. I was like, oh, I know this community. This feels normal. It feels right. So.
All right, Autumn, welcome to Chippewa Valley Schools and to Clinton Valley. That's wonderful.
Thank you.
Congrats. Okay, A, Administrative Reports.
No, the only thing I want to say this evening is, you know, we welcomed our building administrators back last Monday, and on Tuesday, we had our, what we call our JM, our Joint Administrative Meeting, for most of the day on Tuesday. I know that people are very busy. I know that HR has plans and professional development also at this time that many administrators are involved in. So things are up and running, and we're looking forward to the start of the school year, and there's still a lot of work to do, but everyone's in doing it. So that's all good. So that's it for Administrative Reports.
Anything on curriculum?
I don't think so. No.
Okay, K is of and by board members.
Yes, I do. Again, I'm told that one of our board members attended a meeting with, regarding district business with one of the local townships. This is very, very similar to the same thing that I tried to do when Mr. Roberts denied me access to the meeting, to the point where he actually canceled the meeting. And the meeting was canceled. On top of that, the board tried to censure me for just trying to go and get information. And now, again, I'm hearing that one of our board members attended a meeting like this. This is offensive to me, and not only would I have liked to attend this meeting, but nobody even told me that it was going on, so I couldn't attend it. So I guess I just wanted everybody else to know that.
Okay, is that it?
That's it.
Thanks. George, you have anything?
Sure, I just have a real quick one. Everyone, welcome back. We're not going to see you before the first day of school. So I wish everyone a great school year, because I'm confident this is going to be our best ever.
Certainly hope so. Mr. Pearl?
No.
Okay, all I'd like to say again is thank you, and unbelievably impressed with our students, and very impressed with how many students are involved. So I would like to thank them. A few board, we were invited to the JAM last week. It was very nice. Three of us attended, and it's always great. It seemed like they just had the end of the year meeting, and it was starting up again. It was like, wow, that was quick. And one of our retired teachers who taught at Chippewa Valley High School, Carol Kohut, has had a relapse of her lymphoma, and I just wanted everyone to keep her in your prayers, because she's back in treatment. So I just wanted to let people know. That's it for me. Okay, next.
One more thing. Denise?
Oh, go ahead, Ellen.
We didn't excuse Jill. Do we have to excuse her?
Oh, yes. I'm glad you said that, because I was thinking about, I did text her and did not hear back from her. I hope everything is okay with her family and everything, but yes, we will excuse her for this evening so that it's official. Thanks for the reminder. I appreciate it. Okay, next item on the agenda is item L, Executive Session 8H, under Attorney Client Privilege. I need a motion for that, please.
So moved.
Support.
By Ms. Pyden, supported by Mr. Pearl. Mo, vote, please.
Myself, yes. Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Ms. Aquino?
Yes.
Mr. Soba?
Yes.
Mr. Wojtovich?
Yes.
Ayes all, and we are going into Executive Session at seven? Fifty-six. Fifty-six p.m.
Fifty-six.
Do we need a motion now for the other one, too?
No, we have to come out.
No, we'll come back out, because it's under a different.
Okay.
Thank you. We are reconvening into open session at 8:39. Is that correct? 8:39. And the next item on the agenda is to, I need a motion to go into item L, Executive Session under 8C Negotiations. Someone want to make that motion?
Move.
Support.
Mr. Soba? Mr. Wojtovich?
Yes.
Ms. Aquino?
So we can't wait, guys? Wait a minute. Oh, that's right, we can't. Okay, so I just thought of that. Okay, so because we only have Jill here tonight, and we need five votes, no, we need six votes to go in.
Five.
But Beth actually isn't supposed to be involved in anything that's MEA-related, so we really can't even go into this executive session legally. So maybe we just don't do it tonight, because Jill, I mean, we're not going to be able to at this point.
No.
So, yeah, good, thanks, Ron. I didn't even think of the vote curve. Okay, so do we need to amend the agenda to eliminate that?
Is that what you do?
I don't think, we don't want, do we have to?
Yeah, because we have deletions under Part B.
Right, so I need a motion to remove item L, Executive Session.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, I need a motion to amend the agenda.
Move.
Support.
By Mr. Soba, supported by Ms. Pyden.
We need a roll call vote on that one?
Yes.
Mr. Soba?
Yes.
Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Ms. Aquino?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mr. Wojtovich?
Yes.
Okay.
Ayes all.
Yep. Okay, so next, we need a motion to remove item L, Executive Session 8C Negotiations from our.
M.
M?
M as 8C.
Oh, L, because it says L twice. I'm sorry, my mistake. From the agenda, Executive Session under 8C Negotiations. Does anybody want to make that motion?
Move.
Moved by Mr. Soba, supported by Mr. Wojtovich. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, and next is item N, Adjournment. Move to adjourn.
Second.
Moved, supported by Ms. Pyden. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned at 8:43, I guess, 8:42, yeah, 8:43.